Madam Chairman, we love.
Welcome back to our Monday, June ninth meeting, morning meeting. Next up on our agenda is an action item to discuss and decide on the remodel of the Cascade Annex. Commissioner Thompson, I believe this is yours.
It is, and I'd like to introduce Commissioner Moplin and Commissioner Caldwell to Justin Cooney of PacWest Construction. Him and his brother Jason own Pacific West Construction out there. Father has retired last year.
Yeah.
And they are a public workers contractor, and they are going to be taking over the process of getting the Cascade Annex built and done. And gentleman right behind Justin is Michael Irwin. He is a project superintendent that will be working for Pacific West Construction, and he'll be the boots on the ground. And he's, he's very good at what he does. And so these, Justin has a proposal that he will submit to us, and cost not to exceed. It's gonna be a, and you, why don't you come up and explain that, Justin? Just need your name and where you live, for the moment?
Where I live for the moment. Alright, so alright, yeah, my name is Justin Cooney. The owner of Pacific West Construction. I currently live up in McCall, up in Kingsbines subdivision up there. Been living up here for quite a few years, known Neil since...
This is first born.
Yeah, since two, since a long, a lot of years, two thousand four, two thousand five, I think, somewhere around there. So Neil's approached me about taking over this project and helping out with the remodel of the old Amerititle building. He's come down with me in my office. We've looked at the plans, gone over what the scope of work would be. We've talked about doing like a cost plus not to exceed in the amount of $250,000. I don't see any issues with that. And yeah, I don't know if there's any questions for me. I did bring their proposal real quick. I typed that up this morning. If you want me to submit that, I could-
So one of the questions that has come up from our legal team that we need answered is that in order to not go out to bid, you have to state that you are going to be performing 20% of the work. That's a, that's a really important part of our consideration on what to do with this.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be a problem. Typically, a lot of the times when we do our public work stuff, that typically encapsulates the project management and this project superintendent of the job. So that's why we're, we will be hiring Mike to be working for us full time during that timeframe.
Okay, so he will be underneath yours.
So he'll be underneath me, and we will be paying him direct. I will also be coming down to help with some project management. All of the pays will be running through us, so we shouldn't have any issues with any of that. We can self-perform some of the work if necessary to help us accomplish that 20% role. So I don't, I don't see that being too, too much of a problem, so.
And all these subs you'll be hiring?
We'll hire and subcontract with all the subcontracts individually, yeah.
Yeah, we could see the proposal. We didn't get that to preview, so I don't know if you've seen it.
No, I, Neil asked me to get it done first thing this morning, so I went into the office early and got it typed up and put together, so.
I've been pushing on this project.
Get that from you, Justin.
Yeah, I've been pushing on this project really hard and kind of pushed Justin because he was willing to help out.
I just want to clarify. I thought this discussion was a discussion on how to proceed not, whether we were going to go out to bid again, how we wanted to proceed with a process based off our discussion last week in executive.
No, I don't, I don't remember. Well, no, I would, I thought last week we decided not to go out for bid again because that was part of the discussion that Arnie, you filled us in with. Do you want to come up and explain some of that, Arnie?
Well, I think he explained it fine. We didn't like make a, or we didn't do a vote on this.
No, we didn't do a vote, we didn't discuss on whether to do a reopen the bid. Well, we discussed the bid. If we had to rebid, it would put a lot of time-
Sorry, Justin, this is nothing about you or your project or your proposal. This is simply a process where-
I understand.
This wasn't expected.
Procedurally, you didn't make a decision in the executive session. You needed to come out of that, and you were gonna have a discussion today to decide what you were gonna do. What was the choice you were gonna make, whether or not you're gonna rebid or try to work, work with the exception?
Yeah.
So-
And the most important question was the 20%, if I remember correctly.
Alright, so you had to make that decision here, because nothing you would do in executive session would be binding.
I think today the discussion is, first of all, could we meet the threshold of the 20%? That's what you were supposed to come back with. And then whether we want to go back to bid, or whether we're willing to accept something different. I, the proposal is important to me, so I'm not quite ready to make a decision here. So we will, a little bit of time to look at this.
I also noticed on our claims that we're still getting invoices from Clearwater, and if, and Urst, Urstadt, and if that was not done correctly, we need to have some ability to go back and-
Yeah, I was-
Get some money back, or-
I saw that in the, just like you did, on the payroll where Cameron was asking for more money for that, and I, I gotta sit down and have a talk with him, either us or-
That needs to be a total commissioner discussion, I think.
Yeah.
So.
Right now, we are at the 11th hour. We need to get this project going and get this done. These gentlemen are ready to go to work. Talking to Brian, he says we could go ahead and make a decision today to approve this.
And I think that that was kind of the way I left it. I want to make sure that we meet all legal requirements, which we are with that statement of you're hiring the superintendent, and you'll be performing at least 20% of the work, which was the threshold that we had to meet to move forward. I do agree with Neil that we're under a time-sensitive situation. We need to get this done. I can understand your concerns. This has been way outside the scope of what the county would normally do and how we would do this process. So I was looking for a direction from our legal counsel. I feel that we have met that threshold with the clarification on the 20% that has to be approved. And if we can get this done for 250, then that's within the purview of where we needed to be in order to make this process happen, so.
I agree.
So at this point, I understand your concern. We just have to have two or three, and I would understand if you were not there yet in your discussion or your decision, so.
I just think there's a, quite a lack of transparency here. I don't, you know, I understand the need to move forward, but I don't think we need to rush it to, and I would like to see Clearwater and Urstadt have to do the job that we hired them to do. Again, it's nothing against you. It's nothing against your project. I'm sure it's gonna run perfectly. It's more of a process.
And I think we can hold-
And I'm always a fan of bids for county work, so that we use the county taxpayer dollars as efficiently as possible.
So and that's, part of that is why I took this, you know, Commissioner Moplin asked me to take this over, and when I saw that, it's like, okay, there's gotta be a way to cut this down. And as we met with all the departments and met with Michael and Jeremy, who is no longer in part of this process, we looked at that and saw that where we could cut this down to save a good 200,000 off this project. And so I've, I've spent many hours and these guys have been so gracious to be able to step up and help out. And I know if we push this off any further, they're gonna get into their own busy season of their own and may not be able to help us. And that's the reason I'm kind of pushing this, pushing it a lot, trying to get this hand kicked down the road, and let's get this building done. And so it's, yeah, it is saving the county, you know, it's a considerable amount of money.
But our, I'm just gonna keep going back to the initial bid process was not done correctly. I don't believe it was done, maybe it was done correctly, but it wasn't done with the amount of information that we paid for.
Oh, I agree with that 100%. That was, that ball got dropped so bad by Clearwater Financial.
And I do think that we could deal with that separately, and we are, have ongoing work with them, so we can hold them accountable through that avenue also.
Yep.
So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the remodel of the Cascade Annex with Pacific West Construction and their proposal of not to exceed a $250,000 price structure.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second at all in favor.
Discussion first.
Okay.
And I don't, well, neither one of you would know what the final cost would be or guesstimate right now. And I think if, if it goes over 200, it's gonna have to be with our approval. You know, if they come back to us and say, hey, we need a little bit more.
Over 200 or 250?
250, you know, we just gotta show.
Yeah, we, we will document as we go along. If something comes up that's not on those plans, that's more than what we expected, there'll be documentation throughout the entire project. That's a typical thing that we do. I'll take notes, I'm sure, daily and-
Does, do we want to have, like them give us a monthly update?
I think that would be appropriate, or at least you, you're the one bringing it. You could give us a monthly update.
Yeah, I can do that. I can coordinate with Michael, and he'll keep me up to speed. So, okay. That's all I had. Anything else you'd like to?
Okay, it's been moved in second at all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Look, if you will make sure to note that Commissioner Caldwell was a no on that. Great.
Thank you, gentlemen. You'll have to give him the code to get in the annex. And you guys will have to, you guys gotta negotiate your-
We'll figure this out, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out. We'll probably run over there right now, if that's alright.
Yep, absolutely. I gotta be down here for Waterways meeting in the morning at nine. Can I meet you up there at eight o'clock?
Yeah.
If possible?
Yeah.
Anytime. I'm just 25 minutes away.
Yeah, you just live down the road from me, I guess. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, next up on our agenda is sign a community-oriented policing services, law enforcement, mental health grant.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. So what I have before you is authorization to apply for a grant for the sheriff's office to continue to appear support mental health program at the level that we're at now. This is a little bit of a complex process. I'm not sure there are new rules, but step one is submitting some documentation with your signatures, Commissioner, and then they open up the grant and put it into another folder, and then you gotta log into a different place and sign that. So I know this may come before you a couple of times for signature, but that's just the process. It's all part of the same grant, and I'll communicate with you and the sheriff on when step two, or signatures need to happen. So it's kind of a wonky process, but that's, that's what we're faced with, so. Any questions about the grant, or?
I don't have any. I think it's great. Anything we can do to support that program? It's been very effective, I think, so.
I would move that we sign the Community Oriented Policing Services Law Enforcement Mental Health and Wellness Act grant.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we're back on schedule.
Were you?
Oh, they-
Is that something?
Yeah, just a little.
Thanks for doing that. Alright, next up on our agenda is a workshop for an approach permit. Coming up with a good process, if I remember right what this is all about.
Okay.
Is this a specific approach permit or?
So it's, it's starting to become more apparent that there are multiple requests coming in for additional approaches on a single lot. And they're just, I wanted to kind of show you some of the nuances of what has happened, what has transpired, what's currently out in the field, and then hopefully a strategy to manage it a little bit better. It's a lot.
You may want to pull that microphone just towards you a little bit.
I probably just need some guidance, and we may have to come up with a policy in regards to it. So I think that would solidify some of the, some of the discussions of at least what I'm thinking of, of discussions I've had with property owners.
So remember, we talked about this a week or two ago, I can't remember, about the double entrances?
Yeah.
You know, like circle drivers and-
And so this is in Spring Valley, in Spring Valley Road, Railroad Village. The highlighted areas typically what we see on, on our plaits that says, you know, driveway easement, 30 foot easement.
About the drainage easement. Is that where the?
There's also a drainage easement off to the, in between a lot 18 and 19. Do we?
When you, when we were talking, and I just threw out a suggestion, was that to do like a circle drive or two entrances. Do we want to set X amount of acres?
Is that, I mean, that's part of the, maybe part of the discussion here is for future in regards to any kind of policy that we want to set to try to help. What I'm trying to do is not get overburdened with requests for additional accesses when, when really when the plat says you have one. And so I'm trying to, at least, I think it would fit in a kind of, in a policy-driven environment to say, based on our plat, based on this policy, you have one access, you will have to utilize it the best way, you know, as a property owner, as, as you should. But let me, let me go to the next slide. So that same access, joint access, is now this. These are the two separate driveways that came in. Now, a lot of times what happened is we didn't have a policy. We didn't have a permit policy at that time. So they were just granted based on conversations with the previous superintendents. So that's one area where we're, you know, you can go out there and visibly see that each one has a separate driveway. And actually, there should be a driveway easement that encompasses both properties.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to let you know, building director in that Derek is also online, participating via Teams.
So when you're, you're saying the easement for both properties, so both of them should have their driveways going up side by side?
Correct. So they, with the access, if I go back to the previous slide.
So a little bit of history is Rowan Village, Fair Grove, and Wild Wings. At the request of the Valley County engineer, we required shared driveways, so they didn't have so many driveways plowing out onto the road, because these are all, all these subdivisions have small lots.
Right, yeah, I see 0.32 acres. That's small.
I think it makes sense to try to combine access points. As I go into my presentation, there is a, I'm hoping there's a strategy at the end of it that will, and one that had been completed before. So I wanted to just go through this with you.
I can't read all this. I gotta go read it. Go ahead.
So that, the next, the next slide.
Go back to the previous.
Oh, me, alright, okay, sorry.
I want to read the driveway easements, because there's, so just for clarification, the plat was approved, and then they wanted a second entrance, so then they came back to the road superintendent who gave them a permit to do a second entrance, even though it was not approved on the lot.
I think what happens nine times out of 10, a builder comes in, builds the structure in whatever form he can get it into the site, and they provide access mostly directly, Jason, out of their driveway and into their garage. But they never considered to go back to the plat to identify what access do you have.
That's, might have been in the past. Because I know now, building department requires the approach permit before they issue the building's permit.
That's true. This is true.
And, I mean, we had people build over these easements, and previous building official made them cut their eaves off. They were overhanging on this easement, so it all has to do with this approach.
So, go to the next. This is another area in reference to joint use approaches, as I've highlighted. Each one of them represents an access that both lots should enter and exit in the same lot approach. As I go to the next slide, so this is a development, or I'm sorry, a property owner, lot seven. He already has one access. It's not, it's not even a joint access. But now he's wanting, he's requested an additional approach because he wants to park the family trailer, you know, camping trailer there. It gets to be kind of, in this particular area, you know, there's probably not a safety concern. The volumes are low volumes, you know, the speed is pretty low. Access, additional access may not be in a safety component of it, but there is an operational side of it. You would have to. And same, this is the gentleman's current lot, the current driveway is, is as you see it there, and then he's wanting an additional driveway on where the, I guess where the sign is posted.
So they're within like, how many feet?
It's, I would, I would say it's probably not, less than 100 feet.
Oh, it's, the whole lot's only 100 feet wide.
Yeah.
So it's probably 30 feet.
Do driveways have setback requirements?
There's no, see, this is another, I think we can encompass it in some type of policy form to alleviate some of the issues with additional accesses, provide guidance in terms of when development comes in, they need to follow that particular policy. And it can be in a form of an access management policy or access management plan associated with the whole county as a whole. Let me, let me show you the next. So let me, let me go back.
Has he already done this without approval? Is that what he did?
Well, he, he, he received one approach already. That was already approved.
Which is this one that doesn't have a cover?
Now he wants a second.
That's huge.
Which actually is in the wrong location.
Which is in the wrong.
Yeah, no, no additional access.
Let me go back. So I think lot, I wanted to show you lot eight and nine. If you go to eight and nine, there's about 200 foot of frontage. The individual owns both properties. There should be one access.
Owns both properties for now.
That's currently the way it sets. It's one big approach. So it's all, it's all gravel. It's all gravel. It's 200 feet of gravel.
Yeah.
Which, the approach is really where that fire hydrant is.
Exactly, where that, and a lot of times when the development goes in, they will put the utilities in an area where it affects the approach. So now you have to adjust where the approach goes because of what the utility companies have come in. And either you have a drop power or some other telephone.
Can we hold the utilities accountable to not be in our easements?
I'm thinking we can, but it, it goes as part of the development. So that's part of the, you know, the requirement to go out and do field verifications and terms of the development, and making sure that the utilities are in appropriate locations. Maybe the utilities themselves need to be identified specifically. Maybe they are on each plat now. But I wanted to show you like what I think is, I think will be a successful approach moving forward.
Nice barn.
Yeah. Huge.
So this development off of Dawn Drive is already, the, I tried to do circles there. Not good, not very well, but the red circles, those are actual approaches that were constructed before any buildings. Now, if you look at-
Those are all right on the property line for shared.
If you look at it, yeah, they're to be shared.
Dawn Drive?
Yeah, it's already on Dawn Drive. Development is, you know-
The name of the development?
You know, I can't remember right off the top of my head, but this is, this is, I, I think will be successful. If we, if we put as part of the approval of each development, if they're gonna do shared, you build it.
Yeah.
You build it. There's no question.
Totally makes sense.
And so I, I think-
Is that the power box right in the middle of that?
And, yeah, there's a, yeah, utility right there. So this is where I think what we need to do is make-
One isn't recorded yet.
Make, make sure that we get the developer to build it as part of the development. If there's any, if there's any focused areas where we need to keep utilities out of because of the driveway, then maybe that's what we, we need to make sure is as part of the plat approval.
Only thing I would say is like on a corner lot, where they have access to two streets, maybe that would make sense to allow-
This is, see, this is where it's kind of gray. It could be in the, in my, in, you know, interpretation, what is access? What's, you know, something that could be approved and be okay, or safety-wise, there's no concern. But I think we need to have some type of policy that drives this. And what I, what I want to do is I probably want to set up more of an access management system in place to help as these bigger developments go into play. Where does those access points have to reside on? Can we get them as close to the half mile or mile? If they, if they go any further than that, maybe that's a concern because of the size of the development. If it's 100 lots, if it's 300 lots or something like that. I think we need to have something in place to help with, not necessarily limiting development, but to make it more manageable in terms of the traffic that's coming onto the system and how safe it can be. And really, you, you, you have to look at it when, when- And really, you, you, you have to look at it when, when, um, so when you currently have an existing, uh, intersection. You wanna try to limit the access as far away from the functional area of that intersection. Okay, you can't set it, you know, two hundred feet, two hundred feet or a hundred feet from a very busy intersection. So you want to have something in place that helps, you know, coordinate the efforts of where these access points will go. Cause I think, I think safety wise in the major collectors, minor collectors are gonna be more important currently than maybe, you know, the, the local routes that have lots of accesses.
Cause I'm not for this back in your court. What is your recommendation? That, I mean, I know you're presenting this to us, but you're the professionals dealing with this.
Well, one of the things that I would like to do is, is make sure whatever, uh, joint access or on the plats, they build it in accordance to the development agreement. That any joint use will be built in accordance to the, you know, dimensions and, and the design standards that we, uh, are good with. And I think that will help, um, with any multiple developments, or any multiple lot developments that access onto a local route. And now holistically, I think we need to have a bigger, bigger wide range of an access management policy that drives the actual location of those full, full intersection access points, all these large developments.
And I think we could grandfather in existing permits, but date certain, moving forward, you have to, you have to build what the plat said. And that's where the expectation is set by the neighbor, is you're not gonna have all these multiple access points. You're not gonna pull your trailer or boat, everything else right beside their house on these small lots.
And, and that's, you know, that is one of the, the pushbacks, you know, that we get is, you know, I'm, I've got this, whatever, you know, I, I work out of my house, I've got multiple work trailers. Now you've limited my ability to access my property, um, uh, because if I don't have a secondary access, I can't do a, have a loop.
But they knew buying in a development like that, that's what the plat said.
A residential subdivision, it's not a business use subdivision.
So, so in my thought, I know you're getting inundated with these. Now I see this, it's like, I would want to know that, okay, you can have two entrances, but you have to have X amount of feet frontage?
And that, and that's something that I think we can get into a policy procedure item, is that if you have corner, your corner lot.
You access two roads?
The ability to do two, depending on the situation. Uh, if you have more than two hundred feet of frontage of a route, you, uh, can have, uh, two access points, just figuratively here. It would have to be approved by you, by, by, by you guys.
So in your scenario, I'm asking both of you guys. So if I'm buying in a subdivision, a residential subdivision, I'm not going to expect people to have all their work trailers on their front driveway every day. I'm in a residential subdivision, I'm not expecting people to park their, you know, all their trailers there or their, their long haul truck or whatever, I mean.
Yeah, but they're gonna have their RV, they're gonna have their boat.
But they can access it through their driveway.
Well, yeah, it'd be in their driveways, but.
They can, they can put it on their property, but if you don't circle drive, they're bringing home their work trailers every night. And I think there should be an expectation that maybe that's not in a subdivision, residential subdivision.
I think it should be handled in the CCNR. For like whether you can park a boat and a trailer and another trailer there, I mean, really, I think that's more on the developer's side, they need to have the rules, so it's not us telling the property owners what to do. I know there are subdivisions around here that have strong CCNRs and a strong HOA to enforce those CCNRs, I would rather they be the, in terms of how to park, on these entrance, shared entrances, I think it would actually be more in a CUP than it would in a development agreement, so it's laid out initially, correct?
Right, um, when these subdivisions are done, the engineer, you've noticed to the engineer, and the engineer says this is a place we want to see shared driveways. So then we have these subdivisions do shared driveways. Um, and that's how these shared driveways got done, in those three subdivisions.
Do we still do that, Sinda, with subdivisions? I mean, those are old ones.
Yeah, when, when asked by the engineer, I mean, recently we had the Gold Fork River one, and eventually, initially they were gonna have shared access points, but then they ended up creating the frontage road. Took all that away.
Which was a better idea.
I love the frontage, right? And that's really good thought, as far as being able to park and controlling it through CCNRs. I'm just kinda thinking maybe the existing stuff that's out there.
But these small lots, they shouldn't have two entrances, cause then they might impede their neighbor's property or ability to get a driveway, and these were done for safety because in the winter, when you're blowing snow, especially in this Donley area, I mean, there's a lot of snow.
Oh boy.
And you've got these small hundred foot frontages, and they're gonna put two driveways on there, in my opinion. Yes, the ones that just did the whole frontage as a driveway, they should have to reclaim and go back to their shared driveway portion.
I agree with that, but the first one, where it's clear on the right side of the property and is going into their driveway, there's.
The old one, that's before we had.
Yeah, that's, you can't even do that, that's why I'm saying we would have to almost grandfather in what's already there, but not allow an expansion of that. Cause you've already got homes built with those driveways in, but allowing a second one, I would say absolutely not. And, I mean, the guy that just did the one without the culvert in it, he can flip that driveway to the other side of his property and have access to all of it if he wanted, but to reclaim that section.
And that lot seven should have to move his driveway over into the easement before he builds. We had people that actually had to redesign their houses based on these.
Yeah, and they should, yeah.
In the lot seven, I believe the house is already built, so what you see is an old. So that's the concern, is that you have a building community indicating that you can just go in and get access. Get it granted, um, but when, you know, cause I hear the conversation, alright? Uh, so I go, well, I'm sorry, the builder wasn't informing you correctly. You currently only have the one access at this location. I, I said, I will, uh, make a note and come before the commissioners and look at it more holistically because I'm doing quite a few coming in now, I want multiple accesses. And I think we need a policy to drive it.
So are you designing that policy?
Yes, that's what.
Are you offering? I think what you're hearing from us is no on multiple accesses.
Okay.
And let's have a policy around it moving forward.
Well, that will give me enough, uh, so I can answer these other calls that are coming in. And then I can say, well, we're gonna formally adopt a policy in regards to it. I assume any policy that comes out will be a public notice, and so people will have, um, ideas in terms of how that policy should be enacted.
An historic.
Well, if it's a policy, it's a resolution, if it's an ordinance, it's a. All that stuff, if you're gonna codify it, it's just going to be a, a policy. Then it would be an ordinance, it wouldn't be a policy.
Which would give us more enforcement.
Right.
Right, but I, I hesitate because, just to a point, because it's been platted. These are the platted easements, that's what was approved, and now we're just gonna say it's okay.
Well, how do you, if you go back to the one picture?
The very first one, that, that's the old one we took care of.
That one?
This one?
Not that one, the other ones. That, that one, why can't that be?
Yeah, they need to reclaim the rest of it, I agree with that.
And, and put the driveway over on the proper side.
Well, I think because this is off of Google from last year, I think the the home is already constructed with the arrangement of where.
So the driveway on the right hand side, so the home is now there on this lot.
And so they want the secondary access on the other side of their house to have parked their trailers.
The address on the.
So you'd have to add another easement. Oh my goodness, those are close together.
Started a process on these secondary accesses that went through P and Z. And so it was on essentially like a case by case basis, on a lot that could allow it. If P and Z and the neighbors didn't care, you could prove it.
That's a lot of work, that'd be a lot of public hearing, that's a lot of, I don't know why we just don't follow the plat.
But, yeah, I know what happens is when people go to buy this lot, the realtors aren't gonna tell them, oh, it's planted, you only get one entrance, they never say that. They should be letting the people know that.
That's the, part of the, part of the issue.
Real estate agents, I'll get Dan for everything, but every owner is given a copy of the plat. Every owner should be doing their due diligence and saying, I, this is my easement. Every builder should look at that plat prior to the construction of a home. So I don't think anybody should, you know, blame somebody else for not giving them the full information. It's their responsibility to find out what's legally in place.
So can you make sure that no permits are given until this policy is?
If you want me to have a moratorium on permits, I would love it.
We're in the building season, I think that one should.
I know.
So I would, I would just say no to dual permits. Until then, but you have to follow plat, whatever's on the plat is what, you know, we're gonna.
We should be doing, so go one more please, or to the one where the guy had the frontage. That one, he should have to reclaim. And, and use his platted, I mean, if he owns both pieces, there's no problem sharing the driveway. They fear off. He should reclaim all of that and take, he's doing work in the public right of way.
Well, that's true, but what is the front of his lot then? And you're saying reclaim, take the gravel off of it, but then it becomes weeds. I mean, I'd rather see, you know, gravel on the front of it, but I agree with you, he is in our public right of way.
A fence, so that even all of his short term rental guests aren't.
Is that what's happening there?
But it looks like it.
Um, that's a very large park, and it's very, yeah.
Yeah, have him put up a fence along the public right of way.
Should we do that? I mean, I don't know what the.
Otherwise they're plowing out into the.
Arnie, I don't know what the ramifications with that would be, we'll have to see what legally we can do. But yeah, you can just access anywhere under the public road off that property, so. That's a good thought. Let's do it legally, we'll turn that into legal and see what legally we can do to restrict that access. And I go back to the one with the circles that you've got, I don't understand if those, are those homes even built? Or that is just where those.
It's not even recorded yet.
That's not even recorded.
Now I see the little.
Approved, yes.
Now I see that, okay.
It's, it's not recorded yet, so.
So is that what the developer had to do, is those accesses?
Into shared access points.
But he took it upon himself to actually construct it, cause I don't think that was a requirement.
I think that should be a requirement, I think that's a good idea, I mean, it does cost a little bit more.
Good policy to, to add that.
It'd be wonderful if our engineer said, this is where I wanna see shared driveways and make sure that.
I think, you know, I think we did, uh, help guide. And I think that is something I always mentioned, earlier the better, because as, as they start to lay the foundation of it, they want multiple, they wanted multiple accesses on Davis Street. Multiple accesses, single lots.
Having a pre-construction meeting or a pre-application meeting or something, I think is appropriate, because then those guys, before they ever go out and spend money, you know, trying these subdivisions, know a little bit more about what we're asking for. And if it isn't ordinance, then it becomes automatically an expectation of this is what you need to include in your plat. So they're not spending a ton of money, uh, before they actually design their plat. So I do think that some of that, you know, talking to them sooner.
Meeting, and it's supposed to, they're supposed to go talk to Dan, this meeting, it's all over the application.
Well, and just getting to some of those conversations before you design the whole dang thing, and then we're asking you to redesign it, that's expensive. So, you know, getting.
Time commitment.
And if it's in our ordinance, they pull up the ordinance and read it all before they do any of this work anyway, they don't even have to talk to us.
So I'll, uh, work on, um, coming up with, uh,
Ordinance?
Ordinance.
A policy and ordinance.
An ordinance, thank you.
We'll have to start with planning and zoning.
And, uh, but I wanna, I, I truly wanna set up something that we could use as an access management process or plan, so that as large developments come, they understand what we're concerned about and how they need to look at their development, how it accesses major collectors and above.
How long do you think that's gonna take you, because.
You know, I'm juggling, I'm juggling.
Right now, I mean, Dan's been very responsive in his comments back to the process. He's getting involved.
Yeah, cause he gets replanning and zoning right now, we need a road level conversation that's got a lot of, you know, stuff on it, and you have a lot on your plate, you know.
There's a lot going on.
If he wanted to write up those standards, I mean, I can.
Hold it into the ordinance.
The format, yeah.
If you don't mind.
Love it, love it.
You don't have anything on your plate either right now, be careful what you're on.
How long is it gonna take to throw his thoughts into, that won't take any time at all.
No.
Probably cause you've written an ordinance or two, just one or two.
Cause I, I do write ordinances. Alright, anything else on this that we need to answer for you? So, I do. So are we going to make them, we're not going to make people fix what they already have out there. Is there some up there on Loomis, and that's a really busy road that have two access points, I think they should have to shut one off.
I mean, so how do we, how do we enforce it? First of all, how would, how would we like, tell them?
It's grandfathered in almost, it's, it's.
I just don't know.
If it is, if it is a public health risk, then that is another conversation to have. So, Sinda, if you have some specifically, then I think Dan needs to go and look at them. And we would have to actually tell them it wasn't on the plat, it's not, you know, it's a public safety issue. That's a different conversation than just these.
Just some up there.
We still have.
Map or.
Okay, let me get there.
Is there some that were, that went down a railroad? And that one was clear back to the property line, you know, next thing, they're gonna, they're gonna be filling in the ditch back there. Cause if we're not gonna enforce our plat, then we shouldn't put these things on it.
Exact, oh yeah, we have to enforce the plat.
Would this be a code complaints or?
For some reason, I'm not.
Sure, we could do something like that, red letter.
Give me the.
I don't have, I don't connect to the internet.
If you give me the plug in, then we could probably, I can get it from here, HDMI cord.
Well, we're having this discussion. We, we made one gentleman cut his eaves off because he was over the shared access easement.
Well, if people are not doing the right thing, then yes, they should be held accountable, but it's.
That might be a thought that, maybe it'd be a code compliance, and we just write another letter to tell them that they need to. Rocks or fencing or something across our second. Rocks or fencing or something across our second driveway. Jeff gave him an permit.
You think they're on Loomis?
They're on Loomis, yes. See that one to the left of Red Fur? That one. Or that one.
Yeah, that one's way too close together.
There's four entrance points right there. That's a busy road.
Oh, this isn't two. That's just one.
But I'd have to.
But this one is two. That needs to be changed.
That one, this one. Another one.
So is this, this is accessing the neighbors? Is this a joint?
One fifty one.
So there's one, but this.
Lot line on that?
That is a shared driveway? Down to this. That's what that looks like. If the neighbor allowed him to do that, I don't have problems with that. But if it's a shared driveway, it should have been a whole thing here and not here.
On that so I can see what.
Arnie, are any of these yours? Do you have a conflict of interest here? You want me to pull up the plat on that or do you have the plat for that?
So lot three, that one fifty one, shared access is on the east side right there. And the other one should be de-mentioned.
Well, this would be, this or this is gonna access onto.
He doesn't have it. The corner one doesn't have a shared. To choose his.
So this one should go away.
Yes. He wants to pursue those.
I think you're gonna have to go out and look at that one on a public safety issue. I think some of these are gonna have to be grandfathered in if we don't think it's a public.
Well, and a lot of times, you know, like that. Two lots, one was constructed prior to the other. And so they typically would just approach, uh, that would be joint. They wouldn't do. But there you. You definitely see the first approach.
And this is the way that it should have been built. This is a good example.
Right, exactly.
I think those are the ones that had to redesign.
So, you know, and something like that. That's why I always think that if the development goes in with a shared use, it should be built at that time.
And, you know, I'm just looking at some of these other ones. This one actually took all of our right of way also. So this is, yes, they've got a paved area here, but are they accessing here? Is there a road? You know, we need to go out and look at all the drainage easements.
Setback. Limitations of setback.
Some of those, these lines can be a little deceiving too, but.
The internal roads of this subdivision didn't have shared driveways. It was just on those main corridors.
Okay, that makes sense. But I do think that we need, especially in this area, there's been a lot of issues with people burying the ditches. And there's a huge drainage issue through here that I think code compliance is gonna have to spend some time with. And the people are going to have to redo.
They called me and asked me to pipe it. Let me get back with you. On Frank Valley there, just adjacent.
Why would we be piping it?
No, no, no. They, they wanted to. They would pay for it.
Okay.
Do it, do all the work. And I go, I think if you did that, you are potentially going to affect your upstream, downstream. So I would recommend.
Yeah, the first time they get something stuck in that pipe, then you're.
Who's, yeah, who's gonna clean it?
Yeah. Agreed.
And maybe the, maybe the property owner says, oh, yeah, I'll clean it. No problem. Ten years goes down the road, they change. The other person doesn't know how to do it or.
No, I agree with that.
That's an issue.
Yeah, I think you guys be looking at these.
So if Dan gives us, he thinks as a safety concern, we will write a letter.
Yep.
If you can let me know of those areas where you specifically know, that helps pinpoint.
It's just Fir Grove, Wild Wings and Rowan Village right now. And that one that hasn't been recorded yet.
Then again, I did talk with the landowner that owns this. And we're still trying to work toward potentially a different pathway out of this area.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, I've asked for first right refusal on that. Get at least a one way out of there for emergency purposes.
I guess it was last year that he's got to be turning out.
And now it's at the family. So I've spoken with the family about that. But I mean, that would give us first right refusal on that and potentially, you know, something else somewhere else. Try and get back to somewhere where we could get an exit out of there.
This is a perfect example, right? If we start to, uh, look at areas where we're going to, um, connect roadways like new alignments, having an access management plan in place prior to any of that is crucial.
Be huge.
Because development will come in and they'll want to have access to wherever they want. But if we had something in place.
Absolutely. All right, I've answered that.
I'm finishing.
You're gonna get to get some thoughts and I'll.
Yeah, I'll get them.
In the subdivision regulations. Versus the.
Yeah, let's.
Subdivision would only be new stuff.
Oh, I see.
So you might want it in covered uses.
Yeah, well.
We'll talk about that. Let's get it back on our agenda and we will get approved.
In the meantime, no second accesses.
No S, yeah, no second.
We'll say Cinda said so.
Yeah. I was just clarifying.
All right, uh, next up on the agenda is our road and bridge presentation. So Dan, you're gonna be up next.
Yeah.
And you wanna go ahead and let Steve go? Is there something on there for him first?
If you don't mind.
Steve, you can just use the podium if you want.
Okay.
Looks like we have a Frank Church River and No Return Wilderness Cooperative.
We do, yes, a non-funded cooperative agreement. Because a lot of, some of the work is gonna be done in Valley County, so they need your signature on this MOU.
And are we standing in support or are we actually doing work?
We're probably just support. Um, I don't know if we'll get any of our crew out that way this year.
That's a long way out there.
Long ways around. So future, maybe next year, we can schedule in some kind of program. But for this year, no, we can't. We don't have the time or the staffing right now.
They don't have a drone yet.
Not yet, but we're gonna talk about that during our budget hearings coming up.
Perfect.
It's on my list.
Okay. I would move that we approve the Frank Church River of No Return Wilderness Cooperative weed agreement.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. That was easy peasy.
So what? So that's just with the feds, is that correct? That's with the feds?
Uh, this with, with multiple agencies.
Multiple agencies.
My, Custer County, Forest Service, Fitting Game. Everybody in that neighborhood. Most of the projects will be like getting in their boat, floating down the river, getting out, backpacks bringing. Project involved in the future, but not this year.
Not me. I don't wanna be on a boat.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thanks, dude.
All right.
All right.
Take care. Dan, we had one question. It was a carryover from an earlier conversation. And that one is the updated CIP program. We're not using the CIP program anymore. So you want to update those amounts and it's for road development agreements for, um, providing a cost estimate for our road development agreements. So, yeah, are you gonna be use parametrics on that instead of just you doing it?
Yeah, I think.
What is, do you have any kind of a cost associated with that yet?
I don't. Uh, I need to, uh, I briefly told, uh, parametrics that this was coming. Uh, and they said they'd be happy to, to help us in any way. There might be a scoping portion of it that I need some of their help and support on it. And then the, the majority of it might be me. I just don't know exactly how that will go yet because I haven't fully, um, sat down with them and talked it through with them.
I think we're all in agreement. This needs to be done. It's just what is the cost and what budget is it gonna come out of, so.
Yeah, let me, give, give me a little bit of time to, to focus on that and then, uh, uh, we'll come up with a, a good, um, system. Because I, what I would like to do is, um, because we're gonna have to update it systematically every couple of years just to keep up with the overall costs. And there might be, um, a, uh, maybe a, a process or a spreadsheet, uh, that I can, you know, share, share with you as, as being a part of an approval process. Moving forward, that this is how we will, uh, update it based on the expected increases over, you know, the last couple of years. So I'll, I'll, I'll have to put some thought to it, but that's kind of where I'm going with it, uh, with my thoughts.
You want to update the master transportation plan also for some truck routes?
Yeah, so I did. Yeah, I've, I've, um, I'm in the process of going through all of the routes that were identified, uh, in, um, in the transportation plan. So all the major collectors, minor collectors only is what I was being focused on. I want to look at it in terms of accident history, um, uh, speeds, uh, the actual length of roadway, because I think that will also help identify, um, uh, future needs as we go through it. And so that will plug into like the C, CIP portion of it is how I'm gonna, uh, strategize it, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right. So it's up first to repurpose the purchasing of the telehandler.
So I, so we talked about this before. I respectfully request that we do have it in the budget. It was a part of a water truck that we were planning to purchase. Um, and, um, we're, we've actually, our guys are really good at, at scrounging something together and making something else work. So we, we really absolutely need this telehandler. Every time our forklift gets stuck, we have to pull it out of it. Anywhere we're at, either Goldust or even here in Cascade, it's a constant pain for us. So all I'm requesting is that we just, we already have it budgeted. That we utilize those funds to purchase a telehandler.
You both, uh, Sherry and Callan, you both know what that is?
Um, my concern is this. So next year, we're gonna have you guys coming back to purchase the water truck that this was supposed to do because we're making something else work. A water truck would have been a five to ten year investment, maybe longer than that. So whatever is being repurposed to handle as a water truck, how long is that gonna last? Because I think this is gonna be something that's gonna basically add on to itself. We, we do a telehandler this year, but we're gonna have to go back and do a water truck next year.
Well, the, 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 I don't think so because I think we've got all of the necessary, like the, the, the truck itself is in good working condition. The tank will have, it's mostly the components to, uh, spray is, and that's, we're constantly changing and updating and, and maintenance on all of the water trucks. So it doesn't, that shouldn't be, uh, affected for next year.
I got a question for you. When, um, I bought a Skidster from, uh, I think Western Machinery out of Colorado. Um, it was a used one. It was fairly new one, but I think it was two thousand twelve or something. Had low hours on it. It was a Cat three sixty two D or something like that. It was, is one of the bigger ones. And, you know, I got it for sixty grand. I mean, would you look at something like that or are you thinking new?
Oh, absolutely not. We have already identified a terror, a telehandler that would work. In fact, the, 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 um, forget who, who, who we were gonna, who we were looking into.
Somewhere in Montana, isn't it?
That's what I was wanting to say, but I can't remember exactly the company. They called and asked about it and said, we can hold it for only one more day. So I am.
This is.
Begging.
It's a used, used one, is that correct?
This is used, yeah. This is, I, I think it was twelve hundred hours or something like that for less than eighty thousand.
So to provide a little background, this was actually brought up for the fiscal year twenty twenty six CIP committee. It was actually recommended to Dan to come back since they didn't need the water truck anymore and use the funding from the fiscal year twenty five CIP request for the water truck for this. And I will say it was in the ranking for the fiscal year twenty six and it ranked pretty high. Because out, especially at Gold Fork, there's absolutely no way a forklift even chained up will move around out there if it's muddy.
It's a four wheel drive piece of equipment. It, it'll do what you need it to do.
It's, it's a, it's an absolute necessity that we have one.
Yep. I think we can approve this today, but my comment is I think that there's a transparency issue. When we ask the taxpayers to provide equipment and then all of a sudden we figure out another way. I think that that is a concern moving forward. We have to make sure that we have a need. It's not a want when we do these things. If there's a cheaper way of doing it, we always need to do that first.
I agree.
So I would move, or I would accept a motion to approve this.
I would move that we approve to repurpose the funding from the water truck to the purchasing of the telehandler.
Second that.
I moved in second and all in favor. Aye.
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 Then we're auctioning off an F one fifty and a two thousand and four Explorer.
Yes, uh, so looking at, I'm kinda getting my, so both vehicles are about ninety thousand, um, miles. Um, one is a Ford F one fifty, two, two, two thousand and ten with eighty six thousand miles. The Ford Explorer is two thousand and four.
There's nothing in the motor pool? I mean, those are low miles for a lot of our other staff.
Uh, it, so let me see here. I'm sorry. I got the wrong mileage here.
Go on, wait, what?
So the two thousand and ten, the two thousand and ten is a hundred and fifty six thousand.
Okay, that's bad.
So, uh, I'm, I'm requesting that we get, uh, an auction off of these two vehicles.
How much is the Explorer?
Down four, yes.
That's, I.
But sometimes like.
I think I got the wrong mileage on that one as well, but.
Don't have that one.
But I would imagine it's probably in that two thousand, uh, mile range on that one as well. Two hundred thousand, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the auction of the Ford F one fifty and the Ford Explorer.
Okay. You moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I don't power. Was that in the original bid?
Okay, so anything that is, uh, dealing with the contractor, uh, was in the original bid. This is just getting power to it. So that was never a part of the overall contract. We would always have to do that. Um, I was under the. Um, I was under the impression it was about ten to twenty thousand, this came back as eighty. Not sure what the overall cost is, what tariff we're essentially buying, but.
I, you know, okay, here I am electrician, I'm gonna comment on this one.
Yeah.
Cause I deal with this all the time with Idle Power. And I know they do the engineering and they have the, you know, footage that they go from the pole at the, you know, edge of the road and they come in. How many amps are we talking about at this facility that are needed?
Shoot, okay, so there's two locations. Uh, the, the main building is about two hu- I believe it was two hundred amps, I think. The secondary building was um, maybe I'm getting that wrong, I'm sorry.
That's a really low.
Maybe, maybe I'm getting that wrong, the, the secondary building was two hundred amps. Is it five hundred?
Original Goldust building would probably be four, six hundred amps, eight hundred, it kinda goes in increments like that.
If we're doing a crane in the future, I mean, it's gotta be at least six hundred, don't you think?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
It's eight, eight hundred, there's two panels, one that's eight hundred and one that's twelve hundred.
So twelve hundred amps.
Yeah, that's the main building.
Okay, so that, that, that's making more sense then, cause you're coming, you're coming two or three four inch pipes all the way into a big CT can. Okay.
Will they allow us to cut the trench and put the pipe? I mean, they're, they're charging thirty-two thousand dollars for.
They um.
They do away with that, we used to be able to.
We used to be able to dig our own trench, put our own pipe in, being that's the secondary, cause the transformer would, I don't know, where's the transformer gonna sit? That's another question.
Uh, so the transformer, I wanna say it's about maybe two hundred, three hundred feet from a Goldust?
So they're gonna come in with high s- uh primary all the way to this transformer and then from the transformer, we could dig it. And they usually let us do that.
It's probably not worth it if it's that small.
I, I think it's gonna, it's gonna turn out.
If it's that small, it'd be, let them do it.
Yeah, well, our guys should be other places doing stuff.
Wow, eighty thousand dollars, that, that is.
That was kind of a ticket shocker to me. Cause I was anticipating something else, but uh um but the one thing that we took off the, the docket, we're not asking for it, is, you know, the uh, the, the bridge crane, uh so we're not.
That was an addition anyway.
That, it was, but it was, it was still a necessity that we were gonna ask for, but uh.
Yeah, I've never bid, I've never bid that piece on a house or project ever, that's always outside of my scope of the building, so.
Alright, well, it is what it is, we've gotta approve this and move forward.
That's what it is. I'll make a motion that we uh approve that Idle Power agreement for Goldust Road Department facility.
Moved in second and all in favor? Aye, aye.
Reluctantly.
Yeah. Plug knows.
Yeah, I read that and I just kinda coughed.
Probably could have saved some money if they were on the site, but.
Probably, yeah.
No, they're totally off our sight, isn't that correct?
Yeah, they're no longer even interested, right.
They're down at Clearwater with a presentation of planning zoning this week, so. Alright, anything else you wanna update us on? Crews are out busy?
Well, yeah, they're, they're out busy, um we opened up Warm Lake, uh unbeknownst to a few people, they were not happy that we were opening Warm Lake and not uh all of Seashash, so we're, we can never make everybody.
You never will.
Happy, uh we understand that.
Still not open though, are they open now?
It's up, open up to, I think, Seashash.
Okay.
And that, but, that was done by somebody else. Um, but the guys are out doing grading and blading and uh and uh we're also looking at uh you know, doing, uh I've just lost my train of thought, uh that happens sometimes. Oh, uh so the, the other exciting thing, uh out at uh Goldust, we are getting all of our uh inspection reports. Uh they're coming back favorable in terms of uh compaction requirements, but all looks good. Um, they have dug the hole and have filled it. So they're in the process of uh um doing their forms for the foundation.
Awesome.
So um I'm expecting that the foundation um forms will be completed this, the end of this week and then they'll, they may be pouring next week. So that's exciting, and I told them to keep me informed, so I'd like to go out when they, when they uh, when they start, when they get the forms done, so I can see it.
Take some pictures.
That's my plan.
Those to McKenzie and we'll document our progress.
So did you see the uh piece, I can't remember where I was reading it, about lobbyists are trying to get approval for highways carrying ninety-one thousand pound rigs?
Yeah, that, I mean, there's, there's uh a, a lot of that going on, you know, I mean.
I hope that doesn't go through.
Hell, I mean, you can have special requests and uh special uh permits for the, the heavier vehicles.
They're trying to make it just as a standard though, it's like.
Well, they probably start to see the, the um, the heavier trucks are being, not damaging the roads as much as they thought they were going to. So there's probably an al- al- analysis that's informing them that it's okay.
And they're throwing, I know they're throwing a whole lot more tires underneath those things.
I mean, that's part of the other issue, is slowing the vehicle down at a certain speed, so uh that's always been the safety factor of it.
I disengaged with that conversation because there was so much behind it that I didn't have the information from. They keep asking for a letter and I just said no, cause I don't have enough information to really comment on that.
As much trouble as we have with our roads, we don't need help.
Yeah, but you put enough tires uh under it, the pounds per square inch might be the same as a lighter truck.
That's true.
The bigger shoe is probably the length where they won't allow the longer trucks through without a special permit, even though they off-track better than a shorter one.
That's why I, I disengaged, I said, I don't have enough information to try and even take this forward for you.
Uh, a couple other uh items, um so the um Epstein Bridge, uh mentioned that we've essentially uh received approval for advertisement. Uh, we're going through legal right now for a review of the, the contract documents, there's been some questions. We're having the consultant update them and we hope to get that resolved um in the hopes that we'll have a, a bid opening that might change from the last time I told you Doug. Might not be the end of this month, it might be more next month. So we'll have to resolve that because there has to be thirty days of advertisement.
Just let me know. So did you get, uh you said you got some Atlas back, did you get it back on the merit title building?
Okay, so I did have a, a, a meeting last Thursday regarding this, uh just kind of uh o- o- off the um on both the uh Amerititle uh geotechnical investigation and the West Roseberry, West Mountain uh analysis. And uh they're uh essentially going to get a draft report to me by the end of the week, I believe, for both. Um, so the hope is that we'll have some uh documentation in regards to um both. Where they're kinda heading on uh the annex, it's probably better to um essentially take out the, the asphalt and readjust the, the uh, the grades of the subbase and then pour back. So we'll have to look at the report, see how far we have to remove. Most likely the base is okay, uh I think they said it was twelve inches. It's a little light on, you know, depth because of the, the, the uh frost, but it's, oh, I think they're gonna say it's okay.
They checked compaction, right? So we're gonna know what, if we have to compact it again?
Yeah, then we'll have to, they'll, they'll give us the requirements in terms of um the material that we'll have to go back in, uh so um. And once, once I get that information, then I'll be able to understand the overall cost of it based on, I can do a kind of a, a rough estimate determine the asphalt tonnage that will go out there.
Right.
So West Roseberry, as everybody, everybody knows, is from the, from the uh the Money Corner uh to the Tamarack Falls uh Bridge, it is in horrible condition. So we do have to do something, that'll probably be number one priority. Uh, do I, do I know the full cost yet, I don't know exactly the limits yet. Uh, that's what I'm hoping that the draft report will come in, I'll know a little bit more about the overall cost. Uh, we have to do something there or you'll start to see it fully fail all the way through it.
Right, right in front of that, the fire department, even before you get to the fire department, there's a huge dip right there. I don't know if we can.
Been for a long time.
Yeah, there's, there, there, there are certain sections that we'll look at, I mean, I'm gonna have to prioritize this um and see what we can do uh with our budget. Uh, but know that, you know, we'll look at it, we'll just try to do as much as we can with the worst condition. Um, and I'll give you my recommendation in terms of it and then um we'll, we'll just have to proceed with that.
That includes S Bridge, right?
So it, yes, no, well, actually, so uh let's talk about that a little bit. Uh, so the S Bridge, I still, I still feel strongly that whatever we do on West Roseberry, if we do that Money Corner to the, to the Tamarack Falls or anything there, we should look at um, you know, cutting that, the curbing off at a bare minimum.
Yep.
It's, it's the lowest cost, it will at least provide enough width across there uh through the winter months. Uh, but I wanna do it at the same time.
As you're doing that.
As you're doing the other, cause if you're gonna impact it, you might as well impact it uh holistically, and I just think it would be better suited that way.
I agree. Or any, uh, and this might go back to Sherry. Remember that landowner has that real sharp corner that we were talking about winging out through there, do we?
Dave Binghamman has been working on that, you might touch base with Dave and see if he's heard anything from the BOR.
Yeah, we have, I still have not received anything from the BOR and I have called many times.
Are they? Gonna reach out to our congressmen again on that?
The BOR getting hammered with cuts like, uh, uh, worse?
I, I, I really don't know, I haven't had a chance to even follow up with anybody.
They're under an interim director or something right now?
The BOR is? Sure doesn't help us.
So uh, and a, and another update, uh um, this is, this is in regards to Carefree area. Uh, this is the lake's irrigation district uh requesting to pipe uh their portion of their ditch through the Carefree area. Uh, I think I presented it on this, um and, and, and the uh irrigation district came. We ended up, I ended up attending the actual uh public meeting, so um and um there are a lot of concerns with the property owners. Uh, some questions had been answered, some questions still need to be followed through. And I believe uh at that point, the, the, the irrigation district said that we, we will uh uh have another public meeting. Uh, and we will try to answer as many questions that, as, as you can, as we can. Uh, as long as you, all of you get together and write them all out, cause I think, I, and this is what we landed on and what I, what I um, I thought would be the best form for them to focus their attention on because there's probably a lot of similar questions that can be tied to the same answer, they would just have to formulate it in that, in that way, so.
And do you think a lot of those concerns are on the fact that they have built into the right away, all of their landscaping? So whether it's the county gonna do something or the lake irrigation, I know people are concerned about having to move.
Well, from what I heard, it was more about, okay, so there's, there's an issue with the uh irrigation water seeping into the ground. Okay? So how does that affect my well? There was no ability to really get that answer to.
Recharge of the aquifers.
Well, I mean, it's, it, you know, I, I don't know, uh uh but that would be something that the irrigation district will have to answer. You know, i- i- is it affecting, would that affect their um well? And um on the output, so do, will it dry up? Probably not, but will it be lower? I don't know.
Yeah, cause they're not, I don't think they're watering that field that's adjacent to Carefree either, toward fifty-five, that eventually is gonna be development. As a developer that owns that, now there is a.
And, and so the, the, you know, the, the property owners really just asked a bunch of questions that they didn't have all of the answers for, and so that's why they suggested to get together again to answer them. But they specifically asked me to ask you all about having a public meeting here.
That was the original request.
Uh, so I don't, I'm just presenting it, uh and I can um follow back up with both the irrigation district and the, and the homeowners. I just don't know if, if, I, I would rather go through that next meeting, see if there's any uh other issues that yet to be resolved and maybe having another meeting here might be uh beneficial. Uh, I just don't know, I don't know what the full outcome or what they anticipate on that outcome of that meeting, that they are.
That meeting?
I'm sorry?
When is that next meeting?
Uh, they were, I think they were talking about July, mid-July, after, I think it was after the fourth.
I'm chairman, commissioners, Lake Irrigation did request to get on the agenda for next Monday, but it was regarding a proposed conservation project. Just to share with you.
So damn, did the Lake Irrigation District, did they bring up the fact that they're, you're talking water rights?
Um, there was a lot of, uh, I mean, it was, you know, they were being very uh respectful uh in regards to the needs of the property owners and they're trying to work with them, but there were other users downstream that uh are very concerned about the utilization of water.
Water seeping into the ground.
The water seeping into the ground, uh making sure that whoever needs that water at the end of their.
The end user.
Gets it, and that's the con- that's the competing interest for all of this.
Well, the irrigator, the irrigation company is there to provide irrigation water, but are those downstream, do they address it? Are, are those downstream users not getting their full water rights?
They're, I'm thinking that they're not, it's not getting, that's why they, part in part, they wanna pipe it. Wanna make sure that it's pressurized, they wanna make sure the end user gets the, the required amount for whoever it is and, and uh and their agreements are. It, it's also, it, you know, in some ways, it's a benefit to um cause right now we have some siphons, as we know siphons fail. So if you pipe it, it's pressurized, it becomes less of an opportunity for it to fail unless it's constructed incorrectly. But um, but you how, it's a more of a safety issue, you don't have to shut down the road, you know, th- those kinds of things, so there's I think there's a uh, they, they really need to identify the, the positive side of it and the negative side of it. And try to correlate any questions and concerns between the two.
Okay, we're out of time. Okay, we're out of time. That's a conversation that's gonna probably be ongoing and some of that is.
Of my pay grade.
A civil conversation.
That's pretty much it then.
Thank you. Okay, next up, meeting minutes of May twenty-seventh, if we have a chance to review those.
Everything's fine.
I moved that we approved the meeting minutes of May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. You moved in second at all in favor? Next, I would assume Yolly's here to propose Philip Moore as a board member of the Waterways Advisory Committee.
If you have any questions.
You didn't, didn't bring him with you?
The only questions I have is we always wanna balance boards with competing interests, you know? Making sure everyone is, is representing a constituency that they bring with them. So this gentleman does work for a commercial voting entity. Do you have anyone else on that board that is standing in support of that? Cause now we have somebody that's running a marina, somebody that's representing the voting community. I wanna make sure we have enough balance on your board.
Oh, we have, you know, the other people that are on the board. Garrett, uh, Montec, Montec and, um. What's the other one?
You got Grant from.
Grant, yeah.
One running the marina though.
Steve Dole, hell here from Cascade.
Steve's a voting member, okay?
And, uh, then myself. It's five of us. Yeah, I believe, you know, the only reason I think it's good to fix because. He has to do a lot with people that come in and bring their boats up. And, uh, basically boat up here. And he also, you know, uses Viatic a lot. There's, you know, he has insight into what's, what, what's going on. He has some different opinions about the boat ramp there than. What others have, which I think is healthy, you know, we discuss different things. City McCall definitely has. Different approach to things than we have. So.
That's why I think it's important to have all voices at the table so that, you know, I mean, you'll have one out of five that can vote differently, but you bring. Competing views, so I think I would like to see your next board member be somebody that may have some competing views. And bring all, all ideas to the table, in my opinion.
So is he, uh. And you've talked to him about be able to make as many of these meetings as possible?
Yeah. That says otherwise, don't bother.
Yeah, well, it's like Scott, he really struggled getting there.
Yes, well, Scott is so busy, he's just.
Now, I make a motion, we, uh, approve Philip Moore as the board member of Waterways Advisory Board.
Okay, I moved in second at all in favor?
We got, we got a meeting tomorrow.
All you do.
Tomorrow morning, right? I'll see you then.
You wanna be there?
I'm gonna be there.
Okay, the next is approving this response letter to the Association of General Contractors. Um, the letter, uh, Arnie did send out from Legal Counsel, an explanation of. Uh, our Cascade Annex renovation. Did you all have a chance to read that?
Yep, I read that, let's see.
I, I did ask for a couple of. Uh, corrections on it, just because it was difficult for me to understand a couple of the phrases that were being used, but I saw the. Rest of it.
Will we give, have Arnie give us a clarification on those or?
No, it was just terminology, changed it to the last. The board will announce its decision and plans for the Cascade Annex renovation at a future public meeting, which would be today, so.
Make a motion, we approve the response to the Association of General Contractors.
Okay, I moved in second at all in favor?
Hi. Yeah, I thought it was, it was a good letter written, Arnie. Thank you. You weren't, you weren't using my name in vain, so I appreciate that.
You want all three of us to sign this? Didn't have any of our signature lines on it. I mean, I can sign it. Okay, I signed it, so if that's okay, then leave it at that. And our signature lines on it, so. You guys okay with that? You guys can sign it, whichever you wanna do.
I'm good.
Okay. All right, next up, um, so. A month ago, month and a half ago, I took to the elected officials a reemployment policy. And I believe that we all discussed that. Basically, it states if. You are re-employed by the county, you have to have left under good, um, employment. Oh, and not have anything in your file that was derogatory or negative. Uh, without prior approval from the Board of County Commissioners.
Remember, she's talking about that.
Is it written up? Is there an actual policy?
There is, I apologize, that did not get in our packets. I think I gave that to. I think I gave the policy to Mike.
Yeah, I didn't see nothing.
Let me see if I still have.
Maybe we could postpone this decision for one.
Can we do that? We can do that.
Table it?
We will table this discussion until next week. Clark Miller, will you get that on the agenda for approval next week?
And. Motion to table?
Uh, I don't think so. Um, Arnie, you guys have written that up. Can you send everyone a copy of that, please? Do you remember it or did Brian do it? Will you talk to him about it, please? Back to all of us and get that in our packet for approval. I apologize on that. I did take it to the other elected officials and everybody was in agreement that they thought it was a good policy. I have no concern with the rest of our team and I'm not thinking that. That was a good policy to put in place, so. I think that's super important, we get it done and codified, so. All right, with that being our last item on the agenda, we will recess for lunch and see you back here at one o'clock.